Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Craven County Board of Commissioners' regular session for Monday, April the 6th, 2020. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Mark.
Here.
We also have in the room County Attorney Gary Brady via phone. Jack White.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gene Hodges.
Here.
Amber Parker.
Here.
Craig Warren.
Here.
Don Baumgartner.
Here.
Sheriff Chip Hughes.
Here.
All right, thank you.
Could we stand for the pledge and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, our help in ages past and our hope for years to come, we humbly come before you today as a representative body for the people of Craven County, and we ask you to hear our prayers on behalf of those people that we serve. Many people are suffering a great pestilence in our land, many others fear its coming, and many are affected by the consequential damages. Lay your healing hand upon our people, O Lord, and give them cause once again to sing the praises of your mercy and tell the stories of your compassion. Bless the members of this Board of County Commissioners with wisdom, strength, and courage during this time of testing, and keep them united in making the decisions that lead our county to healing and peace. We ask you to hear our prayer and answer in your mercy. Amen.
Amen. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I believe Vice Chairman Jones would like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would like to offer a motion to table the petition of citizens, also to table the Commissioner's report, and to replace the County Manager's report with a report to be given by Health Director, Mr. Scott Harrelson.
We have a motion, a second, discussion. All in favor say aye. Nays, the ayes have it. I'm going to take Chairman's privilege for a moment, and I would like, number one, to thank all of the Commissioners for the support they have given me, the Vice Chairman, and the County Manager. Working together has been a pleasure. Although we're working on the phones, everybody is out there doing their job and making sure all the people around them are safe by telling them to wash their hands, distance themselves, and make sure that they stay in their homes as much as possible. I also want to congratulate, not congratulate, but I'd like to thank Jack White for the work that he's done in organizing everything that has gone on in the county during this crisis, and at the same time dealing with the Vice Chairman and I on the phone for two hours a day. I also would like to thank Gene Hodges, Amber Parker, Craig Warren, our esteemed attorney, Nan Holton, our county clerk, and a young lady that's not here this evening, Allison Newcomb, who works as administrator in the office. I just think that the work that they've done and the hours that they spend owe the Commissioners, we owe them a gratitude for being here and being in harm's way because they have to see each other each day even though they're distancing themselves. Most of all, I would like to thank the employees that are out there, coming to work every day, even though we're closed. They are seeing people if they have to by having the person call up, make an appointment or by phone or computer. They go outside to meet the people or come inside. They're putting themselves in harm's way each day, too, and I think we owe them a debt of gratitude. We have unbelievable employees who are working for us and doing their job. In addition, I'd like to thank the hospital for the work that they've been doing, the doctors, the nurses, and everybody that works as a caregiver in putting themselves in danger of catching the virus. And last, I want to thank the citizens of Craven County for following the guidelines of the President of the United States, the Governor of North Carolina, and the local Commissioners here by doing the things to distance themselves and keep our figures as low as we can as far as people getting this virus. Thank you very much for listening to me. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of March 16th, regular session, tax releases and refunds, subdivision for approval, National Library Week proclamation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes. Department Matters, Planning Subdivision for Approval, Don Baumgartner.
I think Lightened knocked out something on our system, so spare with us a second.
Okay. Well, wait a second. We're having a little thunderstorm outside that's affecting our technical devices here.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jack. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jack.
I'll tell you what, so just to avoid the pause here, let me take this one. I know it was Gene's phone because the other phone died, but Mr. Baumgartner was going to present to you. It's on page five of your agenda, item number three.
Yep.
This is subdivision for approval. It was taken before the planning board on March 26, 2020, and it was recommended for approval. This is called Mill Phase One in Heritage Farms. It's owned by Blade Road LLC and engineered by Thomas Engineering. Property was surveyed by Corbett Nobles and is located within Township Five off of Blade Road. The subdivision contains 26 lots on 13.58 acres, and the lots propose to be served by county water and individual setting systems. In your agenda package on attachment three, there are maps of the subdivisions that are shown. I did speak with Mr. Baumgartner about this this morning, and from my review, everything seems a-okay, but I'm available for questions if there are any to discuss.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Motion and a second, okay. Motion by Commissioner Sampson, second by Theron, I think it was, wasn't it? Any discussion? Any questions by the Commissioners? Being no questions?
I have one question. Is 26 lots, does that mean that it's a house for each lot to limit to 26 homes? How do I work?
Mr. Chairman, if I heard the question right, was the 26 lots equal 26 homes?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And the answer to that is yes. That would be the billable lots. Now, I can't guarantee you they're going to build a home on them, but they're being subdivided to be single-family homes.
All right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Baumgartner is in the room now, if there's any other questions. Being none? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Number four is Chip Hughes, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, if Sheriff Hughes isn't there, I'd be happy to take the time.
He's here, he just got here.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Commissioners, it's good to see y'all, and it's good to be here. The reason why I'm here this evening is we've had a number of the citizens in this county that have really become fond of our K-9 program and wanted to help support us in any way possible, and two of them in particular in the form of very generous contribution and checks that were brought to my office for the purpose of supporting our K-9 program. We just wanted to come before y'all and kind of tell you what these folks have done, what they had done for us and for the citizens of this county, and for y'all to consider moving this into our K-9 line item for use of enhancing and supporting our K-9 program.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Are we asking that all of this money be put in his account? Are we going to split it out? Because I read one of these is amounts, I don't know, I think it's the $22,000 is to buy a fifth dog. I have no problems with the $21,500 going to supplies to maintain what he needs for this year, but I would like to table the purchase of that dog since we just approved the four-dog setup at last budget and discuss this at budget time.
Yeah, I'm going to call on the County Manager for a minute to explain how he and I discussed this this morning.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope you guys can still hear me very well, but so what we're going to do with these budget amendments, because it was money that was allocated and presented to the sheriff in this fiscal year, we're going to accept it. The $21,500 does have some strings attached to it, Sheriff, that does require some actions of the county branch specifically. We're going to ask that money be accounted for, but then held back from expenditures until we get the 2021 budget moving forward a little bit later next month. The $22,000, which does not have the same strings on it, would again be approved tonight. Some of the money, are there certain things the sheriff needs to get this year for the four-dog program? The remaining funds from that money will then be applied to next year's budget to offset, you know, planned K-9 expenditures. These will be normal expenditures of food, vet, and training, things like that. Sheriff, can I get that pretty close?
That's exactly right, Manager.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to amend the motion, or if the individuals who made the motion in second would do as Jack said and taking the $22,000 and allowing them to use it for the remainder of this year for the K-9 program, for supplies that they need, and the remainder be rolled over to the next budget, and then to take the $21,500 and move it to the upcoming budget?
So amended.
Okay, we got?
Second.
Second.
Sir.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Department Matters, Emergency Service Ambulance Lease Agreement, Ari Grady.
Mr. Chairman, thank you and good evening. This is essentially a continuation of an ambulance lease that the county and the hospital have had in place for several years. The lease was about to expire. The hospital asked us if we would like to renew it for an additional two years, and the management team quickly said yes. Hospital's in-house counsel, Cindy Turco, basically took the existing lease, updated it, and it's verbatim to what we've signed previously except for the dates in a recital or two. So it's our recommendation that the Board approve this agreement and give the Chairman authority to execute it.
So moved. Second. All right, I have a motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Thank you. Department Matters, Water Disconnection Based on Executive Order 124, Ari Grady.
Yes, sir. As most of you are aware, last week Governor Cooper entered an executive order essentially prohibiting disconnections of utility service for non-payment. A lot of local governments were already in the process of going in that route, and in fact, we had planned on bringing that to the Board's attention tonight and temporarily amending our policy, but the Governor took care of that for us. Essentially, for the length of the order, which will presumably run for the length of the pandemic, we are prohibited from disconnecting for non-payment or charging late fees or charging interest or charging really anything in the nature of a penalty for failure to pay or late payment. The order is mostly self-executing except for one provision that directs the utility providers to publicize this order among its customer base, and the first step is, in our opinion, management team's opinion, is to ask the Board to direct staff to go through that process. It sounds intuitively obvious, but the order requires us to document our efforts at publicizing. So this would be the first documentation, and then, of course, we'll have things on the website, social media, text alert at the billing office, and I believe we're also going to put some flyers in the bills or something to that effect. So the recommendation is for the Board to adopt the motion as stated in the agenda packet.
Second. A motion and a second, discussion, and there's no discussion. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Department Matters, Finance, Budget Amendments, Greg Warren.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I have two budget amendments on the agenda for your consideration tonight. The first one is for COVID-19. As a result of, the county has, as a result of COVID-19, beginning to incur significant and unbudgeted costs for the preparation and emergency response to this global pandemic. Today, approximately 85,000 has been encumbered for the purchase of supplies and equipment needed to keep county facilities sanitized during this event and to plan for the potential teleworking options that would be required if community spread increases. On March 25th, a major disaster declaration for the state of North Carolina was approved, which makes available federal emergency aid to local governments to offset the costs associated with their emergency response. As requested, time that the Board consider approving the budget amendment appropriating $250,000 from fund balance in order to cover any costs incurred as a result of this event.
So moved.
Second.
Second. I have a roll call, excuse me, any discussion on this? Can we roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes. Thank you. The second budget amendment on your agenda is for the Convention Center Debt Service Payment. On September 12th, 2019, the county closed on the $10 million installment finance agreement that was funded, that funded major improvements that were completed as part of the Convention Center Recovery Project. The debt service schedule for this financing agreement calls for the first interest payment of $121,611, $11.11 to occur this fiscal year on 4/1. I have prepared the budget amendment in your agenda packets, which considers appropriation from occupancy taxes collected into occupancy tax trust fund, transferring them to the general fund to make the payment.
Okay. Second. We have a motion and a second and discussion. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is appointments. Appointments will be effective immediately. Pending appointments are Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, five vacancies, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, three vacancies, Senior Legislative Tarheel Alternative, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Recreation Advisory Committee, Craven Community Child Protection Team, and the Craven County Clean Sweep Committee. I believe we have no appointments except the pending ones, so take care of that at the next meeting. County Attorneys Report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and I feel like I should apologize to the Board. Y'all have heard from me more during the middle of the pandemic than you probably have in any other meeting over the years, so, but we've got several pretty straightforward items for the Board's consideration. The first is the final offer to purchase real estate for parcel number 5009031. This is a joint tax foreclosure with the city of New Bern, and the bid is $2,250. The total taxes that were foreclosed were $3,067.01, and the current tax value is $2,250. The offer has been advertised, there have been no upset bids, and the matter is ready for the Board's approval, if you would like to do so and get it back on the tax rolls.
Okay, now the motion. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, item B is an initial offer to purchase tax foreclosure property at 208 Daniel Street in New Bern, the parcel ID number of 8-018-063. This is a joint tax foreclosure with the city of New Bern, and therefore we own the property jointly with the city of New Bern. The offer amount is $9,500, and the total taxes that were foreclosed were $4,309.40, and the tax value is $18,000. As with other jointly owned properties, we basically let the municipality take the lead, so New Bern is indicated, this is acceptable to New Bern. If the Board is inclined to accept the initial bid, New Bern will put it out for upset bids, and hopefully we'll be back in a couple of meetings with a final offer for the Board's consideration.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, item C does involve jointly owned tax foreclosure property with the city of New Bern, but it is a little bit different than a situation this Board has seen in a few years. Basically, the structures on these properties located at 839 Pavey Street and 1010 Gray Street, both in New Bern, are extraordinarily dilapidated, and the city is beginning the process of condemning slash demolishing those structures. And of course, as a property owner, theoretically, we are responsible for our share of those costs, which, in my opinion, is not anything we should reach out and demand to have responsibility for. In these situations in the past, it's been a few years, basically the city has said, hey, you know, we'll pay for it if you guys will just give us the property, and then the city will do who knows what with it, donate it to Habitat or whatever. We have routinely approved these types of requests in the past, but again, it's been a few years, so if there's some questions from the Board, I will do my best to answer them. But it is my recommendation that we approve the transfer of these two parcels to the city of New Bern.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I agree with the proposal. However, I think we ought to set up a timetable to follow up and make sure the city follows through with the demolition.
Okay.
We can do that administratively, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
It can be, I don't care if it's three months, six months, but we ought to make sure that it actually gets done.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it.
Lastly, Mr. Chairman, item D is a final offer to purchase tax foreclosure property 318 Crescent Street in New Bern. The parcel ID number is 8004048. The Board has obviously seen this parcel before we put it out for bids. There were no upset bids, and the initial offer of $3,800 is the final offer. The total foreclosed, $9,687.35. The current tax value is $7,600. It's my recommendation that the Board consider approving this transaction so we can get the parcel back on the tax rolls.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? And no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next, I'd like to call on the Health Director, Scott Harrelson.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Good evening, yeah. Before you say anything, I just want to say how we appreciate, as Commissioners, the job that you're doing, the hours your people are working and putting themselves in danger. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. That is much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Mark, and all Commissioners. Jack had asked me to put together a brief update of how things are going here locally. We're up to 18 cases, and over 18 cases, 11 are active, seven have recovered. We actually have five cases in the hospital, but to my knowledge, I think most of them are recovering. We actually had two over the age of 80 that seem to be recovering. Those two were the most troubling to us, but it looks like they're doing better. We had seven that are travel-related and nine that are community transmission. For the first time, we actually had close contacts that were quarantined also turn up positive. We had two of those. And 83% of our cases here locally are 50 and older. My staff and I are seeing hundreds of tests being done locally, so there is definitely a representative sampling here in Craven County between what the hospital, the private center, and the health department has done. There's actually a database, state database called NC Eds, and we see a whole lot of negative tests coming in. So the vast majority of the tests are coming back negative, but it would not surprise us at all to see the number of cases climb during the next few weeks. Some of the projection models are saying the peak in North Carolina is probably going to be somewhere around April 23rd to April 26th. And what we're trying to do is look after the most brutal population and really stay on top of the folks at the long-term care facilities. But from what we glean from talking with those folks is they're doing a really good job, no visitation, they're taking temps on all the staff before and during work periods, basically taking all the precautions that they can to try to keep it out of any of our local long-term care facilities. So our initial or index case here is over three weeks ago, I believe, and for us to just still be in the teens, that shows that the social distancing is working, and when we do these contact tracing, it's usually just the household contacts. So that makes our job a whole lot So that makes our job a whole lot easier. I think now, if we can keep the hospital in good shape and hopefully keep this out of the long-term care homes, we'll be doing well. I'd be happy to go answer any questions you may have.
Do I have any questions from any of the commissioners?
Just one question. Do we have any cases that have arisen in our long-term care facilities for seniors?
We have one that has been tested to date, but it was an individual who had their own room, and none of the staff has been symptomatic, and this particular long-term care facility has been pretty diligent about what, about some of the measures I spoke to earlier. So hopefully, that will come back negative. We're submitting things now to the state labs, so it's a lot less turnaround time, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two days. And when we submit those and let them know, it's actually a special form, they go to the front of the line for testing.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman. Scott, Jason Jones here. I'm glad to hear that a lot of these tests now are being sent to the state lab and being able to be done in two days. Do we have any of the other tests that we've heard about nationally that you might be able to get something done even quicker? Are any of those available in North Carolina for our healthcare providers or anything?
I've heard that the hospital may be getting some. I don't think they have any yet, and I have not heard from the state lab or any of our state meetings yet that we're going to be getting any, but I do think that's going to be a topic. We got a call tomorrow, a statewide call at 1:00 p.m., and I'm hoping that they'll discuss those tests on that call.
Okay. Would it help if we called Greg Murphy and asked him to ask for, or a health department to get one of those?
I think if the state is trying to do all they could do, if they can get some, I do believe that they'll send them our way. And, you know, I know there are more and more cases in North Carolina, but I think a lot of emphasis is being placed on the states to have a whole lot more cases than we do right now, too, though.
Right. Thank you, Harold. Harold, I'm not the Vice President Pence, but I don't have that card, but what would you advise the people of this county to do?
I would advise them to stay the course because what they've been doing has been effective.
Okay. Thank you very much for your report.
I'd like to say, Chairman, that one of our older spills in the New Bern died, Rob Brown, 108 years old. He died in the last week.
Well, we wish his family your sympathy. If there's no other report, I would ask for an enjoyment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.